Whatever you want to do. So can we do? So after the next meeting, Mark and I are going to go out and do shots of Patron. And you guys are going to stay behind.
Is it short next door to chairs?
Oh, it's short.
Are we getting our chairs still? So listen, I'm going to pull the mag on. I'm going to get relocated. I've got something here that I want two chairs. Yeah, exactly. Yes! No, it's not far from there. I want to go back. I want to get in there. Yes! Exactly. One chair.
All of them. So time will introduce me. I'm going to introduce all of you. And at that point, you guys can sit. Are you going to say something about the program before they see you? I can't plan it. I just have a list of names at this point. But, yeah, you know these guys. The two of you know these kids, and you're programmed best. I'll introduce everyone, and then you can come up.
Was there an incident?
Say a couple of words. You get to stand at the fancy. Actually, Julie does, because if she's going to voice over you. Yeah. And then the kids can speak.
So what time is your call raise last night? Were you getting a candle?
I think it's a connection of the importance of ASL to the community. It was similar to what they're.
Exactly. Exactly. Done. Perfect. Shorts. I was a Spanish.
It's like, you know how the rest of us, when they have the wind being out?
My mom says this is one of the things I hear about.
It's like, move your soul through your feet.
I'm glad.
It's like my baby doesn't have.
Good evening. Welcome to the November 8th Board of Education meeting. If we can begin with a call to order, please. I mean, a roll call, please.
Mrs. Blanks?
Here.
Ms. Exum?
Here.
Dr. Greenberg?
Here.
Mr. Paul Yuke?
Here.
Mr. Sarzen?
Here.
Student Representative Grace Andrews?
Here.
And Maddie Pliskin?
Here.
Thank you. Mark Overmeyer Velasquez has a work obligation, and Mark Zidanowitz should be joining us later, but he has a celebration for his daughter's soccer? Baseball? Basketball?
Track and field.
Track and field. She does so many talented things, it's hard to remember. And so he will be here after that. Whose turn is it to do the pledge? Please.
Legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, there's no revision to the agenda order, but I do just want to say that, as you all know, of course, there were municipal elections last night, and therefore there will be changes to the board. But our celebration of our outgoing members and the swearing-in of the new ones will take place at the next meeting on November 21st. So for now, we are business as usual. And welcome, Mark. We already announced your daughter's triumphs. Okay. We have student participation, American Sign Language group?
Sure. So if Megan Zengel, our World Language Department supervisor, wants to come up and introduce. Our American Sign Language program is relatively new officially in two years, but it's quickly become one of the most popular offerings at our high schools, and it's something that we're really proud of, and one of, really a leader in the state of Connecticut in offering this as a language program. So, Megan.
Yes. Tonight, we have brought both of our ASL teachers here. Currently, we have eight sections of ASL running between Hall and Connerd, between ASL 1 and ASL 2. It's currently just a two-year program. And so we have brought Julie Colbert, who is one of our Hall teachers, but is also one of the interpreters for the district. So she is doing double duty tonight, representing our teaching staff, but as well interpreting for Mick Posner, our other ASL teacher, who splits his time between Hall and Connerd. She is also interpreting for Skylin Macy, one of our deaf students, who is here to speak about how ASL has had an impact on her, even though she is not in the ASL classes. We have three student representatives, Jessie Connolly Cohen, Noah Fox, and Pax Gregory, who are here to tell you about their experiences in classes. And we also have some family members of our students here, who are deaf. So at this juncture, I invite them all to come up. Mick is going to tell you a little bit about the ASL program itself, and then the students are going to tell you about their experience, and Julie's going to bounce back and forth between interpreting and sharing experience.
Can I just ask, before you begin?
Yes.
Is there camera coverage, so that you can see it visually? Okay.
You're welcome.
So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to bring some of my ASL students here. I asked these students to come, because each of one of them has a different experience and a different way that they take ASL and how it's impacted them and their peer relationships in the community that they live in. So I want to thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for being brave. I really appreciate this. And I want to give the floor to you guys. So, here he goes.
Spanish and French and whatever else was offered, and I also love the teachers that are there.
So my name is Noah Fox. I'm a senior. I really like ASL class, why? The experience. Just, it's really good. And teacher, really good, too.
Hi, my name is. I'm a freshman. Not taking ASL, of course, but I love to see the kids who are taking ASL. And come to school and see them. Hey, and they'll come up to this. They'll ask me questions. Glad that they're motivated to.
I can talk a little bit more about my experience. So I'm hard of hearing since I was four years old, or, well, we found out when I was four. And I've kind of lived my life in the hearing world. I didn't know ASL, didn't really know anything about the community. And then, when I heard that Hall was now offering a sign language class, it just opened my eyes, and I was like, oh, well, I don't really like Spanish class, so I might as well take this. So I took ASL, learned a lot in the first year. I mean, the learning curve was not as hard as I expected. And now, I like to think that I know a fair bit of ASL. It's a really interesting class, and then we talk about deaf space, we talk about deaf community problems, good things about it, and then we also learn actual vocab. And so it's more of just a language class, and it's not like an English class where you just talk about vocabulary or something like that. And we're really learning more about the culture, more so than in any of my Spanish classes that we ever had. So it's just really interesting. And I think it's really bettered my life, and I know that in college, I might want to do something about this. I'm definitely going to take an ASL class, whether or not that's what I major in. Like, there's no doubt in my mind, I'm going to be taking a class like that, just because I want to become more proficient in the language. So it's really helped me. And I think if I had this sooner in my life, it would be really beneficial. So like, I think it would be very, I encourage the use of an ASL class in elementary school, maybe not elementary school, but middle school, definitely. I think that would really help students and young kids in their life.
Speaking to the point of college that Noah brought up, I, taking ASL, I learned from Mr. Posner about the gap in mental health care for deaf people, because it's harder for them to communicate, like, because they have to communicate through an interpreter, and then the message that the patient's trying to convey may change through the interpreter. So I, like, it pushed me to take ASL more seriously, and maybe pick it up in college and psychology and stuff, and learning the language would help me on my way to that profession.
I agree with Noah about putting sign language in elementary. They're so visual. Sign language is so visual. All of the words, but. That community is here and growing in West Hartford.
Thank you so much. We are so lucky to have the School for the Deaf here in West Hartford, and I am, we are all so delighted that ASL has finally made it into our schools, and it was wonderful to hear from you all. Any questions?
Comment. I just want to tell the four of you that you are very impressive. I am blown away by your presentation. You are just, I don't even have the words to express right now, but just sitting here, no one appears nervous. You're conveying to us very professionally, and just, you're a very sharp group of students right now, and I just commend you. I just see you as future leaders, not only as peer leaders, but just advancing in this particular field. So it's awesome. Just continue on this path. Thank you.
So you've got to stick with me on this story. I used to be on the zoning board of appeals when the School for the Deaf was being redesigned. So it was a couple, it wasn't just one meeting, it was several meetings, and I developed a lot of information from those meetings. And one of them was that the reason they had such a big building in the past was because they had so many students in there, and they needed to downsize and make a much smaller place. And the reasoning behind that was because that the schools in each town were, their programs really were being developed, and that the inclusion of the deaf community were very welcomed, and even taught almost, I don't want to say better than the school to deaf, but very equal to, if not better, actually. And that's why they had to downsize, and I find that remarkable. I think that's a great antidote for your programs and what's really happening out there. Getting all those kids into our classrooms and integrating that into, just makes it seamless, and it's a great program. And so, thanks for sticking with me on that story. I know that was a long one, but it had some relevance, and I'm just really proud of you guys. You guys did such a great job. Thank you.
I actually do have one question, which is, are you now thinking of expanding to ASL 3?
I think. I think. I think some people would like that, because they want to get a higher level of communication.
It's actually something, I can answer part of this. It's something that we have talked about and we would like to do as the program expands. Problem being, we need some of them to become teachers. It is not an easy position to fill. So that's one of the struggles that we face with the demand being as large as it is already. So, but we'll certainly, where student requests go, that's where we go typically.
I don't know if I missed this, but how many students are in the program?
Yeah, close to 200 students.
Wow. Only at Hall or Hall and? Both schools, Hall and Connerd. Wow. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear from you and see you all. Thank you again to all of you for coming. I didn't see anyone sign on the list, but is there any public communications? Does anyone want to say anything to us? You have another chance at the end, if you last that long. Okay. There is no unfinished business. There is no new business. So we will move straight to staff communications and reports, beginning with the superintendent's report.
Welcome, everybody. I will start, since I see Brian Cohen back there, the head of our department supervisor for CTE. And very exciting news, that is, I guess, just such a big honor, because the CTEA has a Program Excellence Award that they give in Connecticut for excellence in technology and engineering programs. They give one for high school and one for middle school. And the award was announced last week, notifications were sent out, and the presentation was yesterday at the luncheon. And for the first time that anybody knows about, one district was honored with both awards, and that was West Hartford Public Schools. So I'd like to thank Brian, all of our teachers, our CTE teachers, our staff, and really our students, because the things that we're doing, the things that they're asking for, the things that they're doing in classes, you look at it from, you go from a robotics class, if you want to observe something, to AutoCAD, to graphics, just tremendous work being done, and that's thanks to, in many ways, to Brian's leadership, and to the community at large for what the community demands from our schools to be, whole schools, to educate all aspects of a child, especially as they're at that age when talking about their careers. So a tremendous honor for both our high school and middle school programs. And while we're at honors for both things that, it seems strange that multiple awards are given to West Hartford, so we got another notification. The Chinese Language Association of Secondary Schools said, "After careful consideration, it was with great pleasure that we inform you that we were selected, we had a teacher selected as one of two outstanding Chinese teacher award recipients. Congratulations. Class commends this teacher on being an excellent role model for all the Chinese teachers in the field. They hope we'll continue to commit themselves in carrying out class mission to the advancement of teaching and learning Chinese in K-12 schools." What was interesting is the first notification of that went to Lauren Drazen, Chinese teacher, longtime member of the district, and somebody a lot of people know, and really has done a lot to build our Chinese program. So congratulations to Lauren. Made it interesting, was an hour later, Jing Jing Wu, another Chinese teacher, chiefly at Connerd, received the same recognition. So they were the two national winners of this award, and they are at our two schools. So this is a tremendous recognition for our program, and you see that with ASL tonight, you see that. This is something that inherently is part of a board commitment. Before we talk about expanding ASL into the middle school, we realize that anytime you expand a language, as has happened with Chinese, there are all the ancillary effects of what about the other language, and how do you balance your teachers? Because you're not going to find somebody typically that's Chinese and Spanish certified. Because it used to be, French-Spanish certified kind of went together, you find people. Now we have to balance that. But realistically, the work that our language program's doing, that you saw tonight with ASL, and with these excellent teachers that we have teaching Chinese, it is a great testament. So we're very proud of all of that recognition. I also wanted to remind you, West Hartford Adult Education, tomorrow night, here at 6:30, is the graduation ceremony to be held in the Town Hall Auditorium. And it is one of the great events where we honor our NEDP and GED graduates for the class of 2017. And just so proud of them, and it's one of my favorite events of the year. I look forward to it very, very much. And just a reminder, with Veterans Day coming up this weekend, on Friday, we observe it in our schools, and we have activities that I think we've sent out to all of you in the board booklet, that shows what each school is doing. It's something we take very seriously. We made that commitment to having school on Veterans Day. I think it's one of those things that really made us recognize, okay, if we're going to be in school on Veterans Day, which technically this year we're not, but it is the day before, we made a commitment that we would make sure that veterans receive their proper recognition in all of our schools, and that's a key part of our curriculum to teach. And so this Friday is a very busy day with activities for all of our students and for the town's veterans to come into our schools. So if you get a chance, feel free to stop by one of the events. And lastly, since we don't have an event, since we don't have a meeting next week, the Connerd Hall football game, large town tradition, obviously, a lot of people there, you're all cordially invited to attend, and there's a, you know, there is a warming ceremony at halftime for hot cocoa inside for board members and other elected officials, if you'd like to come by and partake at that point. But, what's that? It is a week from Saturday, that would be the 18th, November 18th. So that's that.
Thank you so much. Questions for Tom? Okay. At long last, we're going to hear about middle school teaming. If you remember last spring, we were asked to think about middle school teaming in terms of budget, and we said, before we can make any budget evaluations, we want to know how it works, how well it works in eighth grade, how we should be thinking about it pedagogically before we make any of those decisions. And so I'm glad to say that we are now about to hear more about that, those programs. Andrew Morrow, Paul Visinas, Andrew Clapsettle, Stephen Cook, and Ms. Joy Wright will all come on up and tell us your stories.
Seems a long time ago, when we were discussing budgets and teaming and possible cuts and such. And so again, as you explained, Dr. Greenberg, this comes out of that request, the board had requested an understanding, a greater understanding of middle school teaming, and why we do it, and how it's been developed over time. And so we have here our three middle school principals, as well as Paul and myself, who will hope to address for you a better understanding of that. Teaming really is a way of transitioning students. When we talk about the middle school years, we talk really about that idea of taking kids from a small community in a single classroom and bridging them to a larger community in our high schools, our comprehensive high schools. And so teaming has come out of that. How do we take a program in a school of 900 students and break it down into small learning communities of 100 students that share common teachers, that share a common language and a common behavioral and academic expectations? And so really what we do with teaming is, is we strive to transition our students. And middle school is an odd time for kids, whether we call that junior high, as many of us were in junior high, whether we call that currently in middle school, there's the pendulum swinging the other way now for K-8 instruction in a lot of schools, especially out west. Regardless, middle school is a time of transition for kids in many other ways as well. It's a time when kids are figuring out who they are as people, where they fit into relationships, whether that be with family, whether that be with peers, and it's really a time when they're developing that sense of identity that then propels them into high school. And so one of the goals in our middle schools is how do we develop and how do we address not only the academic needs, but also the developmental needs? How do we make sure that we have the supports in place? How do we put in place programs like advisory to make sure that adults are connecting with students on a daily basis in school? And why that's so important, and what the evidence has shown us with that? And so really, middle school for us in West Hartford comes to, comes to the idea of, with teaming comes a coordination, a coordination of academics with having fewer teachers, that is, students working with a coordination of interventions, whether that be behavioral interventions, whether that be interventions that allow for mental health supports or other needs. And then the last piece being the communication. How do we make sure that parents understand this critical time, and make sure that we're communicating with parents who, again, are also transitioning from seeing their children in one classroom in fifth grade, and envisioning them then going into a large, comprehensive, 1,500-student high school? And so it's also a transition for them as well, and there's education that goes with that. So really, for those ideas, the idea of the academic and the interventions and the parents, I'd like to turn it over to Steve and Joy and to Andrew, and ask them to really share what they see as the fundamental tenets of teaming, how it works in their building, and then we'll absolutely answer any questions that might come up.
Good evening. So, you know, the reality is, is if you're thinking about well-being for students... So you know, the reality is, is if you're thinking about wellbeing for students, and I started off in the high school, as a high school language arts English teacher and became an administrator at the middle school. And there's nothing, if I think about middle school versus high school, the wraparound support that students get in middle school, I wish that my freshmen and my sophomores had it when we, when I was a high school teacher. And many schools are looking at kind of freshman academies for that reason, because of that wraparound support. And I feel like teaming provides a group of connected, caring adults that support students and it best works in a team framework. So I want to talk about communication because I think that that piece is key and that's to me the kind of turning point tenant. You have all these adults who are connected and how does that work in terms of communicating the needs of students, the successes of students, and there's commonalities and Steve and Andrew will talk about how that might be different. But I have to say that, one, it allows great communication because each team has a team leader. And so they're part of our school leadership teams and that provides an information of support as well as communication between the team of those five or six teachers, and if you include the UA teachers, that's probably eight or nine, to the building administration. They sit on a, a leadership team. We meet every week and we talk about things that include scheduling, to formatting, to programming, to things that are important. And it really is an opportunity for them to have a small group of teachers to make sure there's common expectations, common understandings, but also a voice for teachers on behalf of those 120 kids or so. The other thing that we really have relied heavily on is communicating effectively with families. That's one of the district goals about how is it that we're communicating and we're working on the piece of that two-way communication, which happens a lot, but right now it's how do we move information to families and share information about what's happening, not at the school level, but also at the team level. So at KP, there is weekly or bi-monthly, bi-weekly or monthly communication that comes out of each team. Most of my teams, I'd say about five of the, of the nine are doing weekly points. There's short pieces, ask your child about what's happening in something in class because the idea is, you know, what happens, parents say, it's middle school, I never know what's going on. What, how is school? Fine. What'd you do? Nothing. And so how is it that we help parents communicate with students? We give them those nuggets. You know, ask your child about the current event conversation that we had around. And so something simple like that, along with some reminders that happen as well. And so all of my teams have something like that going. It really is a game changer in terms of communicating around interests and what's happening in the classroom. The other thing we have is a team homework page. So that's the other piece. Where's all the information? One place. You go to the Ruby homework page, there's all the homework from all the teachers. I forgot my, my planner, I don't know where it is. That's okay, let's go to the homework page. But you're not looking for nine different kind of web pages. It's right all there for the family and for the student as well, which has been important. The other piece about communication for us as well is what do you do when you want to support a student and you're seeing one, once, one behavior or concern in one class? How do you know how that's happening across the classrooms? So now you allow teachers to kind of talk about what they're seeing and create common strategies to support those students. One thing about transition, you don't want to do too many things, you want to have a consistent approach. And so it allows for consistency, which is better for students at this age, so that it's the same expectation, it's the same approach for success. And if it's not working, it allows the team to say, why isn't it working? And come up with another common strategy to support students. And that can be something as simple as organization, which is key for middle school students as they're juggling five or more different teachers and classes and learning how to do that, to something more specific in terms of helping students behaviorally who might be having difficulty within a classroom. It allows for common scheduling, perhaps it's a group issue and you do better, this child would do better in a period three class with a different group of students than someone else. It can happen quickly because you have this caring, connected group of students. And the last thing I'll say is what it allows for those, in addition to the strategies for communication, it also allows teachers to get together to think about how we recognize our students. And so we have tiers of recognition, positive postcards, positive phone calls, positive emails, our students of the month, as well as our character counts. We want to make sure students are being recognized. My goal is that by the end of three years, a student should have no reason not, not to have a character counts at some point in terms of being respectful, responsible, and good citizens. And these teachers make sure kids don't fall through the cracks. And that piece is important and only happens because of that team communication and a dedicated time.
And so I'll, I'll kind of segue from some of the last comments that Joy made regarding not allowing kids to fall through the cracks, so to speak, as it pertains to interventions. So every school has their own set of interventions, whether we consider them tier one, which is in the classroom, tier two, they may have a rotation of those interventions for several weeks or something, what we call tier three, which is they, they may have a full year support class in lieu of potentially a language or a unified arts class. So when I think about the teaming and how it relates to that, so we, we have a pretty, pretty large SST team, student support team at our school. And so that may be the school psychologist, it may be a social worker, one of the administrators, would be myself, or an assistant principal, speech and language pathologist, so you can imagine a large group of people. And so how do you coordinate that? How do you get all those people together where you're not covering classes and, and kids are missing instruction or teachers are, are missing instruction? It's through teaming, it's through team time. So giving teachers a, a period a day to get together and talk about kids. So our SST structure, we, we have a calendar, we, we meet with every team at least once every two weeks, so twice a month. We also have a structure with our pupil services supervisor where if we feel as though we've gone through the tiered interventions, we may, you know, agree to testing or some other type of intervention for that child. But, but all this, all the coordination, all the communication is done through, through the teaming structure. So Cedric lived the non-teaming model a couple of years ago. We had a very small eighth grade class. It, it struggled and I, if I had to pull the teachers and ask them, what was the most difficult part, they would say, communication. So if you have a structure in place where they're used to meeting every day and sharing common students, now you're putting a, a high school type of model in the middle school. So when they had concerns, it's almost like you're adding three or four different steps to get what we already had in the other grade levels and then that was the most difficult part.
I agree with everything they said. Good evening, everybody. I just want to touch on briefly, one of the aspects that we reported on last spring that we talked about that some, sometimes overlooked is the importance of teacher satisfaction and enhanced school climate. And we always talk about the climates in our building and teams allow us to have a much more positive relationships, relationship-built, teaming model that allows people to work together and to have common goals, common mission, which is ultimately to help our students as they move, progress forward to high school. So if we're looking specifically at eighth grade, there's a great deal of work that all of our eighth grade teams do to make sure that our kids are prepared and ready for high school. One of the more basic, common, every year assignments we have is preparation and when we are, student requests for high school and making sure that students are placed in the right classes. We do that as teams and you want, and you have those conversations about how well students are working, what are the, the common things that we're seeing with particular students as we prepare them for their high school, for their high school careers. That's just one aspect. There's really a great deal of leadership that we, we need and we expect, as Joy touched upon, leadership aspect of the work that our teachers do and communicating. And so there's, for us, you know, we, we, all of us, we operate kind of under a rite de four model, which is a professional learning community. So it's teams within teams. And it only operates if you have teams across your school and you have high performing teams, hardworking individuals, which we all have. And so we're lucky to have that here in West Hartford. We're lucky to have teachers that care about their, their, the work that they're doing. We have a, a mission, a great mission from Central Office that we all buy into, which is ultimately to support our kids and help them to be the best citizens and people that they can be. And ultimately, teaming allows us to do that. And within that, it allows us to have cultural norms in our buildings that allow or increase that sense of belonging, that sense of, I want to be here in West Hartford, I want to be here in this building, which allows us to do the hard work of, of educating our kids to the best of their capacity.
So I am going to say too, that because I think that social, emotional learning is so important and there's this age between 10 and 13, that's difficult. Students are still developing their sense of self, as Dr. Morrow mentioned, and at the same time trying to regulate all of the things that they're feeling and what happens with that. And teams allow for students to kind of have a, a group of caring people in addition to their peers, but also with adults that allow them to kind of practice those pieces in a very clear way. I love high school. I do. And I think there's a role for kind of moving to that next level of when you may not need. Some kids may feel like eyes are always on me, where you have the opportunity and the fluidity to kind of move. But here, in this critical time between, we have kids as young as 10 to 14 years old, to have a group of caring adults, to have people who are concerned about their wellbeing, not just their academics, which is so important, but if they're not, if we're not addressing their social, emotional needs, if we're not helping them kind of regulate themselves, if we're not helping them think about how their decision-making affects everything that they do, they're not going to be in a place to learn. And so it's allowed that opportunity to happen in a more natural way, in a way that allows lessons to be delivered. Our library media specialist, she couldn't do what she does if we didn't have teams. Our school counseling lessons are actually delivered in that same model as well and it allows students to have common experiences.
So thank you, Joy, and Steve and Andrew. Any questions that we can answer for you?
Hey, thank you guys for coming tonight. One of the things, coming on the Board of Ed, I didn't realize how much I don't know and how much my experience from the 1970s and 80s does not apply today. It's irrelevant. And this is one, I want to say, I did junior high school, I got through it somehow, but I learned so much from what you're talking about and what I've seen from my, my kids personally going through the team program here. One of the reasons this came up though, and we questioned it, we asked for your input, was because we thought perhaps there could be some money saved by breaking away from this structure. And we get to my financial report, I'll give you a little preview. We're going to see that there was a little section where we lost some money, but in the big picture, actually it was a very small amount and it, it's really a good, a good program here. And I'm wondering if you feel something similar about the team approach where maybe, is there an extra cost and, but is it well worth it in the big picture?
Yeah, I, I think if we, when we went through, that's a great question, because we went through last year and identified, you know, when we were looking at potential cuts, there is money to be, to be saved, if we want to use that, that phrase, going to more of a, a junior high model and there's scheduling convenience that comes with that. It's not a huge amount though, if you remember right from last year, we're talking about maybe one and a half, two FTEs per building. And so it's not a huge amount overall. If you remember where the majority of the savings were at middle school last year, if we were looking at the cut, it was in the potential schedule that eliminated one of the UA periods. That I believe had a, a savings of, of 10 or 11 FTEs. And that's a much different model for us. But as far as the teaming, what that does is if you have a year where say you have 280 students, there's flexibility if you were just to schedule them on a high school model where you're not limited to these 90 students are on this team and share this group of teachers, these 90 students are on this team and share this group of teachers. And so there's a, there's a convenience of scheduling that comes with the junior high model that does save you a little bit, but it's not a significant amount. And we, we, I would argue and I'm sure all my colleagues would argue, that the benefits certainly outweigh any potential savings at this point.
Can I just piggyback on that question because I think we were persuaded, I speak of the royal we here, as the board, that for sixth and seventh grade, there wasn't any question that, what you presented was absolutely critical. We all agreed on that. Our question was eighth grade and not just financial, although that was what prompted it so much, is some people were saying eighth grade would be a great time to break that up so that people would be better prepared for high school or whatever. And Joy, you answered some of that, but I just want to ask specifically about eighth grade. Are there any pedagogical arguments for abandoning the team or not abandoning the team? And essentially Dave's question focused on eighth grade.
You know, in, in, I always laugh because every time we deal with the lawyers, they answer, well, it depends. And it really does depend. I mean, if you were to, to line up 100 eighth graders, 50 of them would be fine without the structure of, of the team because they're just ready for that next step, 50 wouldn't. And so we do a fair amount of cross-teaming in our eighth grade, just by the students that go up to the high school perhaps for a math or for a language, or students that require different interventions and maybe, maybe across the team. So we do that more, students are off-team more in our eighth grade models at the various schools. But I think that there's still, I think they would, and I'll open it up if you guys want to jump in, but I would think that there's still a positive response for eighth graders being on a team. I know that there's a, a greater sense of communication with teachers, having that, having those common students and, and when we do have students that are cross-teamed for various reasons, oftentimes that can be a strain on, on teachers and on those communications.
I think it's fair to say Andrew had the experience a couple of years ago at Cedric where the eighth grade had a odd number. So it wasn't true teams in the way we've historically done, there was far more cross-teaming. Do you want to talk about that, Andrew?
So I, I believe we had roughly 260 students, so two teams of 130, so on paper, they were on teams. However, there was no common team time for teachers to talk. What we, what we did is basically gave the teachers some time to meet as grade level academic groups, so social studies met, math met, which is great for academics. However, when you're talking about really identifying those kiddos that, that may be struggling and obviously the rigor increases as they go through, and so we want to make sure that we have everything in place for those, those students. So the teachers themselves would tell you, and it wasn't just, we don't want to do this, it's harder, there was just no time. So what we wound up doing, myself, is, you know, giving some of our professional development time back, our Wednesday timer, because it was essential, we, we just couldn't make up time to meet. So we had to give things back, so where we were short in those areas, we lost it in other areas too. So that was the struggle.
I just want to piggyback one thought with that, with the question because you ask if, if there's a, if there's a cause to do that in eighth grade. One of the things, you know, look at what we're doing in the district right now in our school counseling program. We've identified ninth grade counselors so that there could be one consistent person who's the point of contact for students when they're transitioning. That, that's a deliberate attempt to make that transition smoother, to make that large school setting smaller. When you look at historical models in high schools, there, there are a number of examples of schools within a school, sometimes they called it houses, which, which were essentially a means by which to provide some of these same supports of communication and wraparound services. So I think if we dial back the clock where we were in a budget situation and if we're asked, can we do this? Certainly we can and it comes at a cost in terms of, I think, what, what, what this panel of experts has really shared. If you're asking, should we do this? I think they're presenting the answer of, if we have the means to be able to provide the supports for students, students will get more support in the team structure. Just one more clarification. The teams themselves, are they limited specifically to a grade level? Do they go across grade levels? Like a seventh and eighth grade team?
Each grade level has generally three teams with roughly 120 students. You take, you take your entering population of students and they're, and they're divided across teams. But it's, but there is three separate sixth grade teams, generally three separate seventh grade teams and so on.
Was there a year?
Yeah, Dave, we have done that. Yeah, we have done that in the past. In fact, I believe, Andrew, you did that as well.
Yes, we've done everything, probably. So we had, we had two, my first year, we had two grade levels that were relatively small. And so we had two full teams in sixth grade, two full teams in seventh grade. And then there was one team that was a cross-team, we, I don't know what we called it, but they had a group of, let's say, 40 sixth graders and a group of 60 seventh graders. Now, you can imagine for that group of teachers, it was difficult, but they were the best and they wanted to do it. So we made it work.
The kids aren't, the kids aren't...
Oh, I'm sorry, was the question about the students?
The cross-team, not the student.
Well, they can't be there.
No, the students, the students are in their individual, so the teachers... No, the students, the students are in there individually, so the teacher, if I'm an English teacher, I would have, say, two sections of sixth grade English and three sections of seventh grade English. And that's why we're sharing, we're sharing people and teachers between the two. But it, there's, there's, again, there's structures and, and there's, there's struggles, because I believe, if I remember right, your group struggled with, with common time between them, with lunchtime as well that was shared.
The lunches, everything, because of Learning Lab, which is our structured study hall slash music slash everything else, um, because those teachers were in two different grade levels, so to speak, so lunches didn't match up. It was, it was difficult.
All right, thanks. For clarification, the question Dave asked, that if we got rid of teaming in eighth grade, it represented one and a half to two?
I can get you that information, Mark. I'm, I'm trying to remember our spreadsheet.
Yeah, that's, that's what it was. Okay, if that's the case, then it's, that, that, let's just call it one and a half times three, times three, because there's three grade levels. So the number is much different than, than you think.
No, no, you're talking, one and a half per school.
Per grade?
No, you're only talking...
Okay, because that's what I was asking about.
No, you're only talking...
Eighth grade was, all right, so we're looking at about, okay, looking at about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
That's because of Bristow being a smaller school as well.
Right, so I guess if we came to the fact that teaming wasn't, uh, a budgetary item that we could no longer sustain, from what I'm hearing, the kids would suffer, right? And, and that we would not provide the same environment for them to succeed in, and they would not get the same education because of teaming. Where, so that, I need that, wrap my arms around this, because there's hundreds of schools out there that doesn't, that do not do teaming and are very successful as well. Um, you change your model, your behavior, your teacher patterns, uh, there's a way around it. You have to provide those kids an environment to succeed in regardless of what modeling you're given. So the fact that if model, the team model did go away, I hope the answer is that yes, our kids would still get the same education, and they would have the environment to succeed in, um, because that's what we do in West Hartford. If, in fact, we had the opportunity, or it did not have the opportunity as a budgetary item, to continue that.
So, Mark, I think that is what we do in West Hartford, and I have teachers who are dedicated to student success. I think if you're going to change the model, you need to do that thoughtfully, and it can't be done with less than three months for teachers to adapt to a new model, for scheduling to happen, and that, and it tends to take time. So if that's a decision that, um, the district makes, and I have to say, we shouldn't be making decisions, and I know we have to sometimes, but if we're just looking at the bottom line and not, what are the benefits to students' developmental growth, then we're in trouble. And so if the decision was made, let's look at whether teaming works and whether we gain something, and could students still be serviced and, through the whole child model and a different framework, then to me, that's okay. That's, but that's not, uh, it happened in March, get ready for, for August, and all of you guys need to figure out how to do this. Will teachers rise to the occasion? Yes, because they're amazing. And if they're middle school teachers, they want to do what's best for students. Is that what we should be doing as an organization that's supportive of those teachers? No. So I, I want to say, if we decide as a district, teaming is not the way, then we have to come up with, how do we create? I have a friend who's in, um, St. Louis, and they don't have teams, and he's a six-eight school, and they don't have teams because they have so much cross-teaming, so many kids at the high school, so, but they've created a schedule with families, that they still create times for teachers to get together, for students to get together, but that isn't done in isolation, and it's not done because of a budget crisis necessarily, if that's what we want, what's best for kids. We have to be thoughtful about it. So I have no doubt teachers will rise to the occasion, and that students will do what's necessary to thrive in an environment that our teachers will work hard to provide, but I don't, I, I think we need to think thoughtfully about why we're making a decision, um, and make sure that we have a timeline to implement, um, a model that's going to be effective for the students as well as the adults who are here to serve them.
So I'm going to share one thing, too, please. So will the quality of instruction go down in the classroom? I think instruction would be the same. I think what we've tried to communicate from our perspective is, is about communication. So I've worked in a school, a middle school, as an administrator in California, that didn't have teaming. So the difficult part is, so when you have a teacher that maybe recognizes something in the classroom, student deficiency, and so what's the, what's the channel, what's the means for all that to be organized? And so, does it eventually happen? It does. But is it timely? Is it in the best interest of the student? So living that a couple of years ago with the eighth grade, it's not that we ignored things, or it, it just, the process wasn't there. So what Joy says, if a decision's made to, to go in this direction or in that direction, we just need to be mindful of how to establish the things that we have in the teaming model, so that those type of things, Mark, don't, you know, don't fall through the surface.
So how long have we been doing teaming in West Hartford as of right?
It's been, uh, mid eighties or early nineties, I believe, depends on the different schools.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking...
Yeah, this is a long-established practice in West Hartford for us.
And then, is it, is it, I, I keep hearing this, is it, is it the teaming, is it true that the kids in team, different teams can't talk to each other at lunch?
No.
Okay.
And she knows it.
So this is the piece, so this is, this is, that's a great question. So when it came up, I think the student representative, um, one of them talked about the difficulty with teaming and how, how does it restrict? Um, it creates this family, but then how does it restrict if, you know, my friend, Steve and Andrew are on a different team, we have lunch at the same time, yet we're like looking across one of the calves, hello, friend, that I can't talk to. Um, and so we've done a lot of work, this is prior to y'all, um, or after y'all, this is, we've done a lot of work with making sure that we talk with teachers about the need to cross-team, to say, what does it look like? So now we have, all eighth grade last year, they cross-teamed. And so if you, we have two calves, so if you, at, at lunch, so if you were in the large calf, you were allowed to sit cross-team, and in the small calf, not. This year, we've raised it up a notch, because we took to heart some of the feedback, and we said, what if? We have two calves, we let students choose which calf. So we have a group of students who signed up for the small calf, and that's where they are, and then the other ones cross-team. So it's, all three teams are sitting together in one of those two calves. Now, it's interesting from the student feedback, is that they like it, but at the same time, they're saying, you know what we were forced to do, and we were, we were forced to make friends outside of our comfort zone? And now that you've allowed us to cross-team, we kind of go to our comfort, and we haven't made friends, we have them in class, but we don't sit with them at lunch, and they feel like it's kind of restricted that opportunity to get to know more people, which is fascinating when you listen to students. So at sixth grade, they cross-team when they're in, they don't do separate calves, but within the two large and seventh grade. So in the last two years, we've shifted that model, um, and the only time we kind of, if people need reteaching, and we need to re-center as a team, we do that, and, because I agree. Um, that was a more of an adult comfort. Teachers know their kids in teams, and so, um, while the high school's used to kind of having a duty, teacher duty, and you don't know who you're talking to, because middle school teachers know these hundred and twenty kids, they were very concerned about, I don't know that student, how do I approach them, they don't have a relationship with me. And so we fix that by saying, you respect every adult in this building, and whether they're your direct teacher in class or not, you'll rise to the occasion. And I got to tell you, the kids absolutely did. And so that's not an issue for us anymore.
Thank you. Uh, just to be clear, so all three grades can cross-team?
They can cross-team.
And at lunch? And talk to wherever they want, sit wherever they want?
Yeah, except for, for sixth and seventh grade, if they're in the small calf, that team in the small calf, they stay there, but they rotate every five weeks, so they have an opportunity.
So like with most things with middle school, it depends.
I weigh in in my waning moments.
Of course.
Um, so my child is at Sedgwick, he's in sixth grade, and, and we're experiencing the, the benefits of, of the teaming, uh, setup. And, and I would say that I'm in concurrence with most of, pretty much all of what was said here tonight. Um, you know, I think with my perspective is always, you know, what sort of impact does it have on the students? And I'm not sure how we can really gauge that impact, because we've had this policy in, since the Reagan administration, and I'm not sure if we're going to be willing to do an A/B test to see, hey, KP, let's un-team, and...
Start at six.
Yeah, okay. Right. So I, I, I'm not sure how a future board would be able to assess the efficacy of teaming when you don't have a control to, to judge on. So, I mean, I'll, I'll take you at your word, and not that it really matters at this point, but I would say that if you were looking for savings, you know, if you are looking at an item that has as broad of an reach as possible, this probably wouldn't be the best way to go, unless it was like, God, we don't have any money. Um, you, you know, because this, this just has too broad of an impact. It, it, it hits an entire grade of kids. So, I mean, to me, if, if I were going to be remaining on the board, unless things were really desperate, I would just probably leave it as it is, absent information that would inform you that the alternative might be better or might not be as bad. So that's what I would say.
And it also sounds like at Sedgwick, you had a taste of it. I mean, you saw some of the, the downsides to it, and I think having the touch points, having that sense of belonging, and looking developmentally at that, that age, I wonder what would happen if things were changed and you had a bigger impact on counseling, on the resources and services. Then you may not save money, because you need resources put into another area. It just sounds as if it's really been well thought out. I went to middle school. It was, it was around then. And I remember that, that small, um, that really small feeling, and you knew those same teachers and the same kids, and there was more security around it, and it built confidence. But it sounds like it's done so well, it's been around for a long time, because it's something that is working, and it continues to be something that it sounds like you're finessing, listening to the feedback, making some changes. And I just think, um, hopefully, this will be one of the latter, latter things to be looked at, uh, that we won't be looking at.
Did you, it, it, it falls under the big box of not our problem, Tammy, right? Well, it is our problem, because it's our kids, but, um, the one follow-up that I, I might have would be, I think, Joy, you mentioned something, you know, freshman academies, was that the terminology? Okay. So I, I, I guess where I, I get concerned is that the, the, uh, transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, um, is not easy, um, but it's been mitigated by this team structure. So as we're sending kids into Connerd, into Hall, um, is, you know, I'm not expecting you to have an answer necessarily, but I would like to know what is in place for those kids who are coming in, because there, there's going to be a transition, there's going to be some sort of bump in the road. So does that transition start in eighth grade? Do you start kind of weaning them, as it were, uh, in eighth grade, to get them to the point in ninth grade where they're not totally taken by surprise by the pace of high school?
I'll let Paul talk to, to ninth grade. I will say, for eighth grade, I don't use the term weaning. Listen, I say to my teachers, they're middle schoolers. Our job is to give them the tools and the knowledge to succeed in high school and beyond, but my job is not to prepare them in middle school to say, when you get to high school. Now, do I have teachers that say that and do, yes, because that's what we do, right? We always look forward. But if we're so concerned about, if I'm talking about weaning them to get ready for high school, then I'm not focusing on the time that we have. Do we, though, talk about more independence, um, advocating, and we have a transition program in, in place, and then the high school, which Paul will talk about, does a, a nice job of making sure they transition them during that first piece? But I'm adamant, I wouldn't be a middle school educator if I said, I'm getting you ready for high school. I'm getting you ready to succeed in high school. But our job is not to be a mini-high school, right? Because then we have teaming with the junior high focus, and that's not who we are.
And I appreciate that, because that, that sort of myth, that rush of, I need to make life hard for you, because life's hard pretty soon, you know? Uh, I, I want to debunk that. Um, and, and there are folks that have, you know, that have cited that, and we, and we try to say, that's, that's really not the philosophy. Um, at the high school level, you know, one of the things that we've moved to that I referenced was, was the ninth grade counseling approach. And prior to that, it was, it was difficult in terms of, uh, our, our school counselors do, do a lot of some of that kind of transition counseling and talking with kids. Prior to that, they would have to, they would, there would be this elaborate schedule where, I'm going to go into English nine, because I know that's a guaranteed experience for all kids, or I'm going to try to get into, well, maybe it was in earth science or something. But you generally, you'd have to be careful to not miss kids. And so restructuring the delivery of services is one way that, uh, that they're now able to have a single point of contact that is making guaranteed connections with all kids in that year, and, and, and a, and a consistent point of contact for parents as well. We do have some transition programs. Um, I know that when Tom and I were at Connerd, we started something, uh, through the, uh, opposite PE, we had study halls, and so we started a program that, at the time, was called Empower. I believe Connerd now calls it Red Zone, or, uh, what is it?
Freshman Seminar.
Freshman Seminar, okay. And then there's a freshman academy, um, kind of a parallel idea that exists over at Hall. But, um, the, the freshman seminar delivered through study halls is, was a guaranteed experience where you would have, it started with administrators making contact, and I believe it expanded to school counselors and others to be able to come in and have one-on-one conversations with students absent, you know, realistically, you're absent the team structure. So you have to, you have to go out to the myriad of directions that kids just go in high school without that structured support, and reach them to help deliver the message and help identify concerns and, and, and other pieces. So, um, it exists, uh, but it's harder, because it's, it's not scheduled, it's not, um, and it's not, it's, it's not that there's one point in time where all the kids are in the same place. So you, so you have to, you have to be very deliberate about going out and being able to find it.
I, I think one of the other things that we try to stress with high school, as kids come in, is the importance of belonging to something larger than the school, too. I think, um, clubs, athletics do a lot of this work. Our Link Crew program, um, is really, has taken off and does great work for the kids when they commence that they feel a part of something. Paul and I both did teach at Connerd when there was a ninth grade team. There was an option where you could choose to be a part of it, and the reason it ended is because the students voted with their feet. Nobody wanted to be in it, because you could choose to be in it, and as time went on, people were, I, I remember, Paul, they, we were beginning to place kids into it, and they were, this was, we were both teachers at that point, and kids were resistant to being in the teams, at that point, they wanted their independence. And so, so that did, that did end. About twenty years ago now, Paulie.
That almost seems more reinforcing of it in middle school, because there's a need, and then they become more independent. It sounds like a natural progression, so that's good to know. And I think, is the Link Crew in middle school, too, now pushed down? Okay. Web, okay, thank you.
Do you guys have anything to add from your own experiences?
We have questions, which I'll answer.
Did you enjoy the teaming? Was it, was it that beneficial? And, and, and how, what kind of experience did you take away from it?
Um, I would say that coming in, I remember like my first day of Sedgwick, and I got lost, and I was so sad and scared, and I was like, so many people, and the teachers were just like, I finally saw it, my homeroom teacher recognized me and was like, Chris, like, you look lost. And I was like, the teachers just like know you better, and they like, I, I don't know, they, I have a relationship, like, I still remember so close to all my teachers in middle school, because they really all like focus around you, and, I don't know, I see the, I see all the benefits and how awesome the teaming is. So I take away, I remember like my six-one team, and my seven-two, and my eight-three, I remember like all the teams, and everyone that was on it, I had like a different friend group in each team, like for each year. So it's kind of like, I like how it kind of, um, parallels with how you're growing during like the middle school ages, and you're meeting new friends, and like, you're kind of changing, and like going back and forth between things, and you, it's just a new way to like meet different people. And in high school, I still remember all these like different people I had on different teams, and so many different memories. Whereas if it was the junior high model, I feel it would be more like, kind of, I wouldn't really have so many like little memories with people, if that kind of makes sense, so.
Um, and I actually didn't go to, um, West Hartford Public School Systems for Middle School, I went to private school, and I came to Hall knowing about like three other people, um, my sister being one of them, and, uh, so like two other people. And I like really struggled at first, because it was like the freshman seminars first year, and, um, while like it, they tried, and I think that it was like successful to a point, um, I think that it, it wasn't fully developed when they had it, and I think that from what I've seen and heard freshman seminar is nowadays, I think it would have been much more helpful to have that then, and would have made my transition easier.
I, I don't think anyone...
I, I don't think anyone going to a big new school like that wouldn't have trepidation. That's, you know, you going in, that's, that's a whole thing in itself. I mean, I, I don't think there's anyone that would find that a little perplexing. So, yeah, overwhelming, yeah, because that's a, that's a big step.
Um, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm relieved to hear all, I mean, I, um, obviously shared all the concerns that other folks had. Um, and I'm relieved because to go back to Jay's point, um, we didn't want to make the decision based on money. We wanted to make the decision based on whether it worked or not. And so, it's helpful to hear that it does still work in eighth grade. And it's fascinating to hear it stops working around ninth grade. So, I do hope that the freshman seminar, red power, whatever it's called, um, thing does get beefed up enough that people can get this kind of support that you're talking about, Matty. But it sounds like it's a totally appropriate, um, solution. So, I, I think along with Jay, that, that was exactly our question. And this is really, um, helpful. I just want to say that my eighth grade social studies teacher, um, did tell us, you are all going to fail out of high school. And I, as the nerd that I am, spent the entire summer completely freaked out. It was really quite pitiful. So, I really wish I had a team, right? I am just a pitiful story.
You can't trust those social studies teachers.
I know, I know. I know. She'd be floored if she heard I was a history professor. Just saying. That's right. Um, uh, anyway, so I, I, uh, I really think this was incredibly useful. And I was especially struck at your comment, Joy, about the friendship groups. And I'm glad that you brought it up, too. Because I remember when my, when my daughter went into it and she was, first she was freaked out because her group did not, her team did not include any of her elementary school friends. And I said, but now you're going to know more people when you get to high school. Because exactly, as you said, if she's hung around with her elementary school friends all the time, then she would never meet anybody else. But by the time she got to high school, she'd had three different friendship groups. Although I do have to say that there, there's a group in Washington, which is where she is. Oh, I'm not kidding. Her elementary school group. And they get together for dinners. It's so cute. So, I'll just say that some friendships are forever, but, um, but thank you so much. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Okay, from the sublime to the ridiculous, let's go to the financial report.
There's, there's a secret code we use as far as who makes a motion and who seconds it. And I always have to look to Jay. So, now it's going to fall upon me to remember this.
You're going to have to teach the Jedi. Uprising, yes.
Okay, then, may I have a motion to approve the financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Well done. Very nicely done. Are you presenting?
I'm up here.
Okay.
Yes, it's my turn. Um, page five of your books, you'll see an overview here and you'll see a whole bunch of zeros. Um, right now, this is the beginning of the school year. Uh, this is a report as of September 30th. And, uh, this is a, the first report of the new fiscal year. The focus is on personnel services. And, uh, the others are being worked on. And as the year goes on, we're going to see these numbers kind of expand and, and we'll get into them in more detail. If we go to the next page, page six is the financial report. Just give you some examples of what we're looking at here. Um, for example, account 5111, department supervisor salaries. You'll see a balance of $125,000. And that's because it's a surplus. There was one person who retired after we did the budget. Okay, so, uh, so it's the natural flow of things. Um, there's a couple others here under teacher salary and pupil services salaries. Um, this is our first look, uh, at these $100,000 and $50,000. And, and like I said, as the year goes on, uh, we'll expand upon those. Uh, 5115 is secretary and clerical salaries. Uh, we had two retirees and we haven't filled those in the central office. And this is something we're going to see here. We haven't filled some of these positions. Um, uh, the, the department supervisors, well, that, that person retired and we haven't filled it. And, uh, so thank you to, uh, the staff, uh, and, uh, for making things work with fewer people than they had in the past. And we, we certainly recognize and appreciate those efforts. Um, there, there's another you'll see a little further down, 5150, maintenance regular. Um, this was an HVAC position that moved to the town. So, we still get the same level of service, um, but, uh, on the books, uh, that is now paid for by the town. So, much appreciated there. Um, go a little further down to salaries here, 5206, and those are zero. These are fixed contributions. And again, we'll, we'll see them over time. Um, uh, benefits as well. Right now, we don't have anything to report here. Do you have a note? Um, remember last year we did, um, we had a holdback on supplies. And that allowed us, uh, to save some money. Uh, we won't need to do that this year. Supplies were already cut 8% and we don't see a need for a holdback. Our, our schools and again, the, the staff are doing great with what we've got. We certainly appreciate and recognize that. Uh, any questions before we move on?
I actually do have questions, but does anybody else have any questions first? Okay, I, because it was your last time, Jay. I actually just, I went through to try to understand each, each piece. And I do actually have a couple of, of questions. Last time we talked about whether or not we could restore the, the TAs and the paras who might be needed, but we didn't, we weren't sure about the budget yet. And once we heard about the budget, you said that it was possible. So, my question is, on 5185, teacher assistance, where it is a zero instead of a negative balance, does that imply that the, the paras and the TAs that we need were not budgeted? And so, they're additional ones that will be coming? Do you, you see the question?
So, yeah, that's, there's really, that's a separate issue from the projections. So, the TAs were only, this is September 30th, we're only 18 days into the school year. We don't project the TAs at this particular point in time. So, there is no, the zero doesn't mean that we've analyzed and said it's going to be zero. But zero means we just haven't looked at it yet because it's too early to tell. That's most of these cases, it's just too early to tell. We focus primarily on the salary services. So, that's a, so, we haven't really looked at our TAs and paras in great depth now.
Now, in answer, TAs are one of those positions that, um, in a $160 million budget, the one TA or two TAs plus minus is not a budget buster, but we wanted to make sure we weren't going forward. But for instance, at Duffy, um, where we did have that class overage, but we were holding off till we understood the budget, yeah, that Christie has been given authority now to go ahead and advertise for TA, hire a TA for that position, and go and utilize that TA in the best way possible for the kids in the building, making sure that it's, um, not just, we don't want it to be a trigger point. Here's the number, okay, add a TA whether you need it or not. What is the biggest need? Where does it fall? Okay, maybe it's fourth grade, but is two hours a day better off in third grade for that person because there's a different issue there. So, yes, we're not being as stringent as we were. We're not frozen as we were. Um, so, um, some of those areas will be over because we're always over and that's, you know.
Right. So, just so that I understand then, the number here is the number anticipated, which means those folks, when you say yes to this school or that school, that's already figured out. That's already, at least in theory, part of this number, even if we end up going over?
Yes, because we always have, you know, this assumes that the budget for teachers assumes the teacher assistants are there for 182 days a year. There's always a turnover in the TA. So, no one's there, you know, out of 150 TAs, not all 150 TAs are there for 182 days a year. So.
Um, okay. And that actually may answer another question because I realized then I must be reading this chart wrong. So, when it says budget on the one column, and then it says estimated expenditures on another column, this means this is the budget we set for the year. And this is the ex, it's, the estimated expenditures we expect for the year, given where we are now. Is that correct? Uh, okay. So, the fact that the supplies and materials, for example, um, is exactly the same number, doesn't mean that's exactly what we spent, but it means we don't anticipate any more needs than we've budgeted for. Is that right?
In general, when we take a look at this account, you'll see a series of, you see a series of numbers here. These at some point in time will get a specific estimate of time. We are only one month, 19 days into the school year. It is far too early to project where we're going to be vis a vis supplies. So, the zero there does not indicate that we've done a detailed analysis and that the schools are going to be everyone in, in, right on the button, it could be zero. No, it's just really too early to tell. So, we really don't, I really don't take a look at the detailed schools budgets to see where they are. And they get the wonderful email from Chip saying, hey, look, based on your run rate last year, you're probably going to go over. What are your plans are, you know, given where, what you spent through March, and what you spent last year, April, May, and June, you're probably going to go over. What are you going to do to make sure you s, get, get in line with that? So, this month, we really took a look at the main salary accounts. Um, next month, we're going to be taking a look at, um, you know, transportation and tuition, which are some of our other big, big expense accounts. Later in the year, we'll take a look at professional technical services. Around December, we'll take a look at unemployment compensation. Sometime around February, we're going to take a look at social security. Sometime around January, we'll take a look at teachers', uh, assistance. Sometime around March, we'll take a look at, at teacher substitutes as we, we get a sense on that thing. And like on sick leave and retirement, we're really not going to make a good sense in that till closer to April or May. So, the zero doesn't necessarily mean that it's been, you know, that, that that's where we think it's going to be. It just, at this point in time, we just haven't estimated it yet.
I'm quite embarrassed that I've been on the board for two years and I've never actually understood that before. Okay. Um, thank you. My final question is again, um, raised by the recent budget conversations about the state. I know that we already have, we already overpay some pension line to make up for past deficits. Um, right, that the, the town has noticed that we were remiss and so we sort of have overpaid. So, where is that?
So, the actuary estimate here is how much we need to contribute to get where we are.
And they put that higher than the, right, so that we can make up the difference?
Kind of a catch-up type.
Yeah, a catch-up thing, right. So, where, where here is that catch-up?
So, when we talk about the, the pension benefit, that, that's all in that all other benefits accounts, which is $30 million. That number, the balance on that is going to be zero now, and it'll be zero on June 30th of 2000. Because those are just fixed contributions we're making to other funds. So, we make a fixed contribution for our health, a fixed contribution for our life insurance, a fixed contribution for our pension costs. How that pension cost, what that pension cost is going to be determined for is based on this detailed actuarial analysis that says, okay, this is, this, this is what you've promised people. This is what you've got. We apply a discount rate and we spend lots of money and run it through a model. And bumble jumble, we need to put in $5.4 million. And so, that's what we, that's what we, I think it's 5.4 is our contribution for the 17, 18 fiscal year. They're in the midst of evaluating that now. And so, in a month or so, we'll get what the number we're going to have to put in for the 18, 19 budget year. And that number includes both the, what's called the normal cost, which is the ongoing cost of a pension, as well as the unfunded accrued liability, which is the difference between what we've promised and what our assets are at now.
Okay, that's, that was, that unfunded piece, that was exactly my question. So, I know that it was, I seem to remember that it was set up so that we would in some number of years have caught up to where we were. In theory, when can we expect to see that number therefore decline? Again, I mean, is this a five-year plan?
Not while I'm here.
No. We're going to be funding this forever, huh?
Yeah, no, the pension, the pension contribution is going to, is going to gradually go up over time.
Even though we're, even once we stop prepa, I mean, back paying, it's still going to keep going up?
Maybe in 30 years from now, but we'll, we'll see. I'll, I won't be here to see that.
Neither will we.
No, that, I mean, it's that direct, if there are no future borrowing against it and everything is done exactly properly, then it would be 30 years, right?
Yeah, or maybe 28 or 29. And then we get the, we get the 8% return every year. We don't, you know, we don't, we don't change the benefit structure. We don't add more people. There's so many things that are possible in there, but.
That would be if we always made good decisions and never postponed paying for something tomorrow.
That's our plan. All right. Um, okay, that's my entire question, set of questions.
All right. We're going to move on here. Thank you for your assistance. Much appreciated. Uh, this is the, oh, you, well, you know, we save it for last. Yeah. State and federal grant funded accounts reports. On these grants, um, just know that we spend these over two years. Uh, we talk about this almost every time, but, uh, as a reminder, um, we expect to use up the remaining, uh, balances in the fiscal year, 17 grants. Um, and we are encouraging the privates, uh, to spend their money. Uh, we don't have control over that, but we certainly hope they do. Uh, next page, special funds report. Um, I want to point out a couple here. I alluded to this earlier to give you a sneak preview, but in summer school, um, you'll see there's a number there here. We had a net loss of $75,000. Now, this was due to lower participation, which meant both lower revenue. Uh, we're down $39,000 in lower expenses, uh, down $14,000. Yeah, so an increase to the net loss to $75,000. Program here helps reduce high school staffing by about two to three full-time employees. That's because some of our kids are coming in the summertime, taking a course that they might take during the regular school year. So, this is one where although we're losing a little bit of money here and at $75,000, of course, is not a little bit of money, but in the big picture of the budget, it's, it's, uh, overall, it definitely pays for itself. Uh, so that's a good one here. Um, keep in mind here, we're not the only summer school around anymore. It used to be people would come to us and, uh, like we heard about the American Sign Language program. There are other places for people to go now for summer school. Uh, but it is definitely a well-received program with large benefits. Uh, go further down here, we see tuition revenue. Uh, revenue typically exceeds expenditures by a small amount here. We're, we've got a $46,000 variance. Uh, that's due to special education. And we're going to see that over time. That's going to, uh, fluctuate there. Pre-K, we've got a modest loss here. Um, that's it. And, uh, next one, um, I, I wonder if, if, um, Jay, would you like to deliver?
No.
Dave, I, I can't steal your, I can't steal your thunder. It's just too much fun.
Talking about food, we're coming to nutrition services. Uh, and this is, um, something we've been keeping an eye on. Uh, we, we like to talk about it because food is something that's important to all of us. And, uh, money is too. So, there we go. All right. Um, what we've got here, our first month is always a loss. Uh, this loss, this year's loss is higher as revenues are down a bit and salaries and benefit costs are up significantly, primarily the benefits. Uh, we'll watch the performance closely over the next couple of months. Keep in mind, this includes July and August costs as well. So, we're seeing a large amount there. But, uh, we'll keep an eye on it and, uh, hope for the best.
Can I just ask, is the increase, um, just about July and August? Or is it also because didn't we get a new contract?
Oh, right. And so, those benefit expenses increased.
That's it.
Anything to add to that?
It's just, you know, we had a good year in 16, 17 on our benefit costs. In 17, 18, we had a substantial increase in our board appropriation. And so, our other funds pay for their share of the benefits costs. So, we're having higher costs here. Well, there's more money coming out of the IDA grant to cover those benefit costs as well.
Thank you. Other?
concludes my report.
Other questions before we move to vote on our motion? Okay, the, just letting the anxiety build here while we figure out. Okay, so, all in favor of approving the financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2017, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. I know you've been worried. Uh, and now moving on to the approval of the minutes, another anxiety-producing moment.
Oh, but wait, there's tension.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. This is, this is the, this is the root of scandals. So, I need to just point out
Please.
that the back page four, it says that the Board of Ed approved the minutes of October, the meeting for October 3rd unanimously. Now, that's not possible because I was gallivanting in Las Vegas, Nevada in August, or on October 3rd. I was not here, so I would have had to abstained at that meeting. So, we need to note that for the record.
Oh, and you were, because you were here for this, that meeting?
Well, I was here for the October 17th meeting, but I would have had to abstain because I wasn't here for October 3rd.
Right, so you must have abstained.
Correct. And it says passed unanimously.
You are so right.
See, that, that's my gift to all of you as I exit the board. I saved you all from an insurrection of types.
Okay. Uh, any other thought? Any other changes or adjustments? Okay. Oh, I haven't even made the motion yet. You're not supposed to say that. Okay, so I'm going to make the motion and then we're going to vote on it immediately. Who would like to make the motion that the Board of Ed approved the minutes?
I'll make the motion. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now that we've done that, and having had the discussion previously, all in favor of supporting the Board of Education, the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting with the clarification that there was one abstention, it was not a unanimous passing of the previous minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, yeah. Abstentions, now that I know to ask? Okay. It, so moved? I mean, bingo, we're done. Okay. Board members, communications and reports. Any reports from any board members?
I do have one. I had the pleasure of attending Hall High School, an informational meeting with the neighbors about the upcoming construction project. This is the whole idea, or where it starts out, is the town has to send certified letters to each of the nearby residents. And I recall this flashbacks to my days as a resident neighbor of Charter Oak School. So, we had eight neighbors in attendance. They had some great questions. They're concerned about the construction. All the questions were answered. It was great to have the architects there. Fusco, the folks who built Charter Oak are again doing Hall High School, which is just a neat thing because they know West Hartford. They know what we're looking for now. They know we don't want the trucks going down residential streets as much as possible and things of that. So, they discuss in great detail. And we're looking forward to it. Of course, it's going to be an inconvenience because it isn't construction, but we're looking forward to it. And I know there was a town planning and zoning meeting on Monday, which I was not able to attend. It went well. So, that was great. Good information for the residents.
Thank you. Tammy? Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else? Okay, I'll just say that I had the honor of representing the Board of Ed at the Baha'i lunch last week in honor of the birth of the Baha'u'lla, which is the founder of the Baha'i faith. And it was really delicious. And actually, it was incredibly informative. I really learned a tremendous amount. So, I'm very grateful to have represented you all. But now, the moment we've all been waiting for, our beloved student representatives.
I'll go first. So, as Mr. Moore said, Hall has garnered national recognition, especially in the past two weeks. So, first off, many of you attended the mysterious ceremony that nobody knew about. So, every year, one teacher per state is awarded the prestigious Milken Award. And Ms. Anna Capobianco, who actually taught me in ninth grade, she was recognized for her commitment to teaching. And I'd just like to thank the Board of Ed members who helped share in our celebration for attending. Also, Ms. Lauren Drazen was awarded for one, being one of two outstanding Chinese teachers for her hard work and dedication to Hall's Chinese program. It's really flourished since she's been at Hall. Like, I'd say the majority of people I know take Chinese. The CTE program was recognized as well. And last Friday was Hall's homecoming dance. It was a big hit and over 450 students came. It was really fun and it was a, it was a big success. Fall sports season is almost under wraps, but boys cross country is competing at the New England finals this weekend in Maine. We wish them the best of luck. Madrigal's concerts and feasts are next week. They showcase Hall's wonderful musical talents. For more information about tickets, dates, and times, you can visit Hall's website. Next week is a really exciting week for both Hall and Conard. We have Spirit Week and we are having a pep rally on Friday to prepare for the Hall-Conard game on Saturday and get all of our school spirit together. And then, this Friday, we are honoring veterans with lunch prepared by the foods classes and a performance by the orchestra for veterans. And any Hall alum or other veteran is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So, first of all, I don't know if you guys have heard, but one of the students at Conard got in an accident yesterday. So, he was riding his bike and he got hit by a car. So, he's in the hospital right now. And our principal, Mr. Dorte, and Coach Trasmo, because the student plays football, visited the student at the hospital this morning. And things are looking more positive than negative. So, I just want to give a big shout out and thank you to all this Conard staff. There's been so much support to all the students. So, we really appreciate that. And the student body thoughts and prayers are totally with our peer. So, I guess I just ask the community to also think about that and pray. Additionally, on another note, Spirit Week starts on Monday and the student council is really working super hard to make it really fun. We have big flyers, if you walk in Conard, like decorations saying, this is our town, or like, wear USA on Monday, or this or that, because we have different like themes. And then, we have a pep rally planned on next Friday, which is also going to be very exciting. Additionally, for the athletics, most of the fall sports are wrapping up. We still have volleyball in states. They're in the second round. And then, football is also still trudging on and we're all very exciting, excited about the Hall-Conard football game next week. So, that's, lots of school spirit is getting all hyped up. Last but not least, 10-minute plays will be held at Conard in the black box on November 15th, 16th, and 17th. And more information about that is on the Conard website. So, thank you.
Is the game being held at Hall or Conard?
It's at Conard this year.
It's at one on Saturday?
It is a little, um...
Next Saturday.
Next Saturday, right. It is a little hard to wish you both good luck, so we'll just say...
No, I don't think either of us will be participating.
No, that's right. But I meant both schools. It's like, I hope your Spirit Week...
I have one wish you good luck.
We're not asking. This is absolutely not. We are wishing good luck to both teams. There we go. Thank you. Other questions or observations before we move on? Okay, thank you both. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, November 21st, here at Town Hall. But unusually, we're going to meet early at 6:00 PM. You don't want to miss it because it's a short one, where we will be praising our outgoing lost members who are stepping down and welcoming in our new ones.
No agenda items?
I don't...
No, there is an agenda. There's one item.
Short agenda, though. It's not...
Right.
It's a short agenda. And we can, we can talk about that if we want.
Yeah. Following that, it is business as usual. The next two, meeting is Tuesday, December 5th, again, at 7:00 PM, like it usually is here, of course. And on December 19th, we are meeting, that is our third meeting from now. Any requests for future agenda items? Okay. Comments from our many visitors? Okay, everyone's fallen asleep. Thank you. There is no executive session.